All right, we will call this meeting of the City Council Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency to order. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Greg, is there any report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session.
All right. The first order of business is our annual exercise of reorganizing the city council. I just want to say before we get into that that I want to thank city staff and particularly Crystal and Greg and Jeff for an educational and interesting and actually fun year. And Greg, I hope that we'll continue my legal education in the future. I'm also going to ask my colleagues indulgence about doing one thing a little bit differently than we've done, I think, recently. The first item on 4A calls for me to call for nominations for the new mayor. And actually, we will certainly do that, but before we actually do that, I want to just say that I first met Ron Collins in June of 2011, when he called me up to say, "You don't know me, but I'm thinking of running for the city council, and I know you're on the school board, and I was wondering if I could have your endorsement." And I said, "Ah gee, Ron, that might be a little awkward because I'm thinking about running for the council myself, I just haven't decided yet." And he said, "Oh, okay, well, I certainly understand that." You learn an awful lot about somebody when you're out on the campaign trail with them. And I got to know Ron really well over the course of those few months leading up to the November 2011 election. And I've also gotten to know him quite well working with him as a colleague after we were both elected to the council. And I want to say that over the course of that time, I've developed a great deal of respect and admiration for Ron. I very much appreciate his thoughtfulness as the way he approaches issues. And I have no doubt that should he be nominated and elected as mayor, that he will do an excellent job in looking out for the interests of our community. So the thing I want to do a little differently than we've done before, and the floor is open to all nominations, but I would like to move that the council nominate and vote Ron in as mayor, the next mayor of the city of San Carlos. So are there other calls for nominations or seconds?
I second.
There's a nomination and a second. Any other names? Well then, Crystal, would you call the roll, please? Or am I doing that wrong, Greg?
What we normally do is, under Robert's rules, is close the nominations and then move on to the vote, just so it's very clear for the record.
Okay, well, maybe next time I'll actually remember that. So we will call the call for nominations closed. And my next step is, then we'll move to the vote. Now, Crystal, you can call the vote.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Olbert?
Yes. Congratulations, Ron. (APPLAUSE). Crystal, I need to remind you, you have your first public comment.
Yes.
Ron Collins, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you, Ron Collins, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Thank you.
Congratulations.[258.01][258.01](APPLAUSE). That's it? Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I think now we are to take nominations for the vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, or nomination of Cameron Johnson for vice mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right. Do we now close the nomination? Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to close the nominations for vice mayor.
Second. All right. Nominations are closed. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.[307.44][307.44](APPLAUSE).
Cameron Johnson, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Okay.[337.53][337.53](APPLAUSE).
All right. The next item on the agenda is comments by mayor and council members. Is there any of my fellow council members that like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
All right.
If my voice falls out. First of all, I'd like to thank Mark Olbert for the year that he just had. He had some issues that came up, which were not necessarily in the normal course of business. And he handled them extremely well, in my opinion. I think he ran the meetings extremely well. I think we, as a city, prospered in his term. And I just wanted to make sure that the citizens know that Mr. Olbert did a fine job, in my opinion, this last year, and should be commended for it. So, thank you, Mark, very much for what you did.[396.12][396.12](APPLAUSE). I guess, do you want me to talk about the new guy, too?
You have the floor.
I welcome a new mayor, Mr. Collins, and a new vice mayor, Mr. Johnson. And I know they'll do a fine job also, because that's what we do here in San Carlos. We elect people that do good jobs and who care, who have lived here and know the situation in the city. And we're blessed to have the folks that we have on the council. And I just want to wish them all the best, and I probably won't disagree with you for at least a meeting or two. But, seriously, I appreciate your leadership for the next year and wish you all the best. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.[451.81][451.81](APPLAUSE). Any otherbody like to speak?
I'll just say a few things. Not so much about us as council. We, of course, just went through a change, and there's the things that we do as elected officials, but I just wanted to highlight for folks the past year and the things that are significant that have changed in San Carlos. And maybe I look at it this way because of the profession I'm in, which has all to do with buildings. But you'll notice that you're sitting in a nicely remodeled new council chambers. And if you've been on council for as long as I have, I go back to when Mr. Eaton here was the mayor. This used to be a dark dungeon, and it's so nice to have it redone. And, you know, we make decisions as council members, we give direction to staff, and then they turn around and do the work. So I think some appreciation tonight to our able staff and led by our city manager, Mr. Malpe. The other project that is of note that happened this past year is over there across the way at the library, and that was remodeled. And it was closed down for a little while, and now it's reopened, and was very nicely done as well. And I think those are two very nice projects that we have to be thankful for in this city that make us that much nicer of a place to live and do business.
Thank you, Matt.[552.82][552.82](APPLAUSE). Mark? Well, I think that Bob and Matt have pretty much said it all, and I'll just extend again my congratulations to the two of you on your new positions, and may God have mercy on your souls.[572.75][572.75](LAUGHTER). No, in all seriousness, as I said, with both of you, I know we're in good hands, and I look forward to another entertaining year. Cameron?
Yeah, I have a few things I wanted to say. First and foremost, it's been a privilege to serve on the city council for the past year, and I want to thank my colleagues for electing me to the position of vice mayor. I want to thank Mark and Ron for their service for the past year, ably leading the council. And I want to extend my congratulations to Ron on being elected mayor and let you know that I will do everything I can to support you and to work hard to make the city a better place. I think it's a great time to live in San Carlos. Every time I walk downtown, every time I take my daughter to the park, I'm struck by the vibrancy of our community. And I think, really, our only challenges are about how do we protect what we have for the long term, and how do we seize the opportunities that are in front of us to make this an even better community? And I'm very excited to work on that. I would be remiss if I didn't extend a special thank you to my wife, Selena, for all of her love and support allowing me to do this, and to my daughter, Josephine, and my son, Ellis, who provide love and inspiration for the work that I do here every day. I want to thank Matt and Bob and Ron and Mark, who have all been doing this longer than I have, and have provided me with a lot of wisdom and experience along the way. And finally, I just want to thank everyone who's here tonight, everyone who has sent me an email, met me for coffee, stopped me on the street, or come to a council meeting to provide advice, encouragement, ideas. I appreciate all of you, and thank you for taking the time to participate in making your community a stronger place to live. So, thank you.[696.12][696.12](APPLAUSE).
I just can't believe all these people came out for garbage rates.[705.25][705.25](LAUGHTER). Residents of San Carlos, city staff, and my colleagues on the city council, I consider it a great honor and privilege to be selected to serve as your mayor for the next 12 months. And I want to thank you for the confidence you've placed in me. I also want to thank Mayor Olbert for his time as mayor. During the past year, serving as vice mayor, I gained a new respect for what it takes to be mayor. And I think Mark has done an excellent job in running the meetings, setting a civil tone and an orderly tone for all of our proceedings. It may not be apparent to everyone all the time, but a considerable amount of reading, questioning, and deliberating goes into many agenda items. And with Mark's leadership, when it comes time for a vote, we are ready to make well-reasoned and educated decisions. It is for this dedication to public service that we, as a city council, staff, and residents of city, owe you a debt of gratitude. As for my other fellow council members, I'm continually impressed by the time and the hard work you all give to this position. The people of this town are all better for it. I'd also like to thank our city staff for the tireless work they put in to provide us up here on the dais with the information that we need to make the critical decisions that affect all of us residents in San Carlos. When you're in this position, you realize how important it is to have smart, capable, experienced, and dedicated professionals working for you. It starts with our city manager, Jeff Malpe, who never ceases to impress me with his understanding of all the angles of every issue we face, his ability to argue both sides of an issue and give us the pros and the cons of our potential actions, while all the while accepting and supporting whatever decision we ultimately make, his ability to anticipate problems that may be headed our way and give us options, and his ability to think creatively. Jeff heads up a team of true professionals any city would envy. I just want to make sure they know how much I appreciate the work they do every day for our city. Being on the council, let alone mayor, also requires the support of one's family. And I am fortunate to have a wife who supports and loves me in spite of the time I spend on council duties, and in spite of my occasional blow-by-blow descriptions of what just transpired at a council meeting while she's trying to go to sleep. But before I go on, I'd like to mention that it appears that I am not the first member of my family to be mayor. It turns out my dad, Joe Collins, who just turned 94 in October, was the mayor of Midget Savannah, Georgia, in 1931, while he was in the sixth grade. Pretty impressive-looking guy, huh? He apparently went around giving speeches to the kids at the other schools in Savannah. So, thanks, Dad, for paving the way for me. And as far as I know, he is going to watch this tomorrow, he's going to watch it on the stream in Florida, where he lives now. My family and I have loved our nearly 50 years combined here in San Carlos. We've seen many changes during that time, but this has always been a great community on which to live, work, and raise a family. My experience serving on the council has taught me how complex and, at times, emotionally charged governing a community of 29,000 can be. It takes an engaged community, a dedicated council, and a highly professional staff to ensure that our community continues to thrive and prosper. Even then, there have always been and always will be differences of opinion. As your new mayor, I'm committed to build an even stronger culture of public collaboration among the city council and to ensure that we achieve the goals and objectives we have created. We all have strong opinions up here, and we've all come from different backgrounds. But making decisions that are in the best interest of San Carlos is not like being members of Congress, who are forced to govern from so far away. We live here, and the five of us are affected by the decisions we make. You've heard the expression, "Think globally, act locally." Well, that's what I like about being on the city council. We get the opportunity to do just that. When I came on the council three years ago, I said we need to listen to each other's voices, ideas, and priorities, and engage the community. I still believe that's true. We have our differences on this council, to be sure, but that is just part of the democratic process. However, it is paramount that we respect each other as people and each other's opinions and focus on the issue at hand, and that we continue our tradition of conducting our business in the light of the public and to the highest ethical and professional standards. It is my sincerest belief that through a collaborative approach, our council can come together with this community to accomplish great things and solve the important issues facing San Carlos. You never know what nugget of enlightenment you will gain from a colleague's, a staff member's, or a resident's comment, so it's vital that we listen and keep an open mind. I'd also like to say of how lucky this town has been over the last 20 years to have had so many outstanding mayors before me. In addition to the three sitting up here with me, I feel blessed to have known such people like John Buchanan, Sally Mitchell, Sylvia Nelson, Don Eaton, Mike King, Randy Royce, Omar Ahmad, and Andy Klein. Except, of course, for Randy and Omar, both of whom we are all indebted to. I'm fortunate to be able to call on any of these individuals, all of whom still live here, whenever I like, for advice and counsel. And believe me, they are not shy about giving me advice, should I ask them. We've accomplished a lot over the last three years, and we have, as a city council, created an ambitious agenda to engage our community in the year ahead. For a more in-depth look at our council's current goals and objectives, I invite you to all read through our city's new strategic plan and to attend our annual State of the City address early next year, sponsored by the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce. But now, I'd like again to thank my fellow council members for their support, and I look forward to a busy 2015 as your mayor. And my thanks again to the people of San Carlos and the continuing privilege it is to serve you. And one final thing I'd like to say, this is not my scripted comments, but when I was growing up, especially as a teenager, Belmont and San Carlos, to me, were like one town. I went to Carlmont, I went to Terre-Linda, so I was always either on the border or in Belmont, and I was everywhere. A lot of my friends at Carlmont lived in Belmont, so I didn't think anything was different between the two cities. And then, after I got out of college, I moved away and lived in San Mateo for a while, and I came back. When my wife and I came back, we found that things had changed. And it wasn't particularly pleasant for a while. And I have to say that today is a new day. I want to thank the Belmont City Council for the wonderful job they are doing. Dave Bronstein's here, Charles Stone, Warren Lieberman. They have a great council, and we've been doing some really good things with the Four Corners Committee. I am very proud to know them, and I rely on them as well for advice and counsel. And I think we are very lucky, as a city, to have this new day, and I think they are headed down the road to accomplish some great things. So I just want to thank the three of you for coming tonight and tell you how much I appreciate your friendship and your working with us in such a great manner. All right. I think that's it.[1169.16][1169.16](APPLAUSE). Thank you. The next item is changes to the order of the agenda. Jeff, are there any changes?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The next would be council communications and announcements. Council communications and announcements are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So, why don't we start with Matt? Nothing? All right. Bob?
No, we had a Four Corners meeting, which I'll let you report on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items here. I had an opportunity to do a second update for our local residents who live at the Elms last week, which was very interesting, very lively discussion, asked a bunch of good questions. Ron, we should definitely talk about the scheduling of that going forward, because they would very much like to hear from you, if you're willing to do that, in January at the Elms. They also had one specific request, which I would like to just pass along to staff. There's some concern for some of the residents at the Elms as they're moving around the community, right around the Elms, that traffic enforcement could be upped a little bit to improve safety at the intersection with Elm and Cherry Streets. So I pass that along for staff to factor in. I also wanted to mention that, as was reported in the news in the last couple of weeks, the Sequoia Union High School District is working on trying to develop a magnet high school in San Carlos, on the east side of San Carlos. And they have, as I mentioned at our last meeting, they have located some property that they're interested in right at the entrance to L'Oreal Park. It's wonderful that they're thinking of putting a high school in San Carlos that would be open to our students. Unfortunately, that's a fairly congested area of town for traffic. And it turns out, in the conversations I've had with the district staff, there were apparently some other properties on the east side that they considered but rejected because of the cost of environmental remediation cleanup. And so I'd like to see if any of my colleagues are interested in having us direct staff to work with the Sequoia District and report back to us on what some of those alternative properties might be and what might be involved in getting them cleaned up, either by approaching the people who actually cause the pollution in the first place or some other mechanism. Because basically, I would, as I said, love to see a high school in San Carlos. I'd also love to see it a little bit further away from that particular interchange. So I don't know if there's any interest on the dais in that, but I wanted to bring that up. Doesn't seem like there's any interest. Okay. All right. And anything else, Mark? Nope, that's it. Okay. Cameron?
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And I just had a couple of things. Just had an opportunity to attend many pre-opening and opening ceremonies of Palo Alto Medical Foundation over the last month, and I finally ended up there as a patient the night before It's a beautiful facility. And as Bob pointed out, we had a Four Corners Working Group meeting on the first, a week ago today. And next, we're going to have a series of community meetings, probably sometime in February and after that. And we're going to talk about alternatives to fixing up the Alameda de Las Polgas and the San Carlos Avenue traffic issues. So there are some, as some of you may have seen in our prior council meeting, we had a report to council on that a couple of weeks ago. And we are making, I think, for the first time, some significant process, or progress, rather, on changing that intersection and really improving traffic flow. So look for that to be happening probably early next year. Also attended a Heart Board meeting on the third. Heart is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. And last Friday, had an opportunity to listen to Jerry Hill's State of the State talk at the Chamber Access San Carlos Breakfast last Friday. And then finally, attended with the mayor, or the now-former mayor, the Night of Holiday Lights last Friday night. And the rain cooperated and stopped right in time. It was just great. So it was a lot of people there and another great evening. Okay. And that's about it for that. Any staff comments on city administrative business?
Two brief updates for the council this evening, Mr. Mayor. Both of them are related to the Sequoia Union High School District's ongoing plans to locate a magnet high school in San Carlos. In a conversation I had today with the superintendent, he let me know that Wednesday night this week, the 10th, at 5:30, the board will be having, the Sequoia Union High School Board will be having a board meeting where there'll be a public hearing regarding this item. And he expected them to get to the item around 7:00, but the meeting starts at 5:30, so I'd like to pass that along for the benefit of the council and the community. Also learned today in that discussion and a discussion with our community development director, Al Seve, that the high school district will be making, in writing, a request to the city per government code to have the planning commission review their desire to locate a high school at the current site on Old County Road, to get a determination from the planning commission whether or not locating a high school there would be in conformance with the general plan. That's part of the California law under the state of California. It doesn't mean that the planning commission's decision whether or not it conforms, that doesn't bind the high school district to whether or not they could choose to override that and locate a high school there. It's just a legal step in the process. So I wanted to make the council and the community aware that sometime in January, we'll be having this item on the planning commission agenda.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. The next section is public comment. Public comment is for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. Each speaker is allowed two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, the mayor will draw five speaker cards from those submitted to speak during this time, and the balance of the public comment speakers will be called upon at the end of the council meeting. If you are speaking on an item that is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions as allowed under the Brown Act. And our general policy is that we refer items to the staff for attention or to have the matter placed on a future city council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion input at that time. Now, at this time, I do have five speaker cards. So the first is Mr...now I have a sixth. Thank you. The first speaker is Mr. Andre Carpio. Mr. Carpio, come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council and the staff and the audience. My name is Andre Carpio. I come from Amoryville for the last 13, the last 11 years to claim my solar car that was stolen here in San Carlos, in which nobody done anything about it, except Mr. Groco, who did ask the police to investigate. And the result of the police was the publication of a Lululela story. I was never consulted as the owner of the solar car. And as a proof, I still pay the insurance, which is $1,400 a year for the full coverage of the car, because I'm a manufacturer and I have to stand for the product liability. I don't know if any of you understand anything about that, but I guess you don't, or nobody does, because you're not an engineer, you don't make anything, so you don't know what's product liability. But product liability is a very important item when you own something and when you manufacture something. The second item I have here is that I would like to make a presentation, and I would like to...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council and the staff and the audience. My name is Andre Carpio. I come from Amreville for the last 13, the last 11 years to claim my solar car that was stolen here in San Carlos, in which nobody done anything about it, except Mr. Groco, who did ask the police to investigate. And the result of the police was the publication of a Lululela story. I was never consulted as the owner of the solar car. And as I prove, I still pay the insurance, which is $1,400 a year for the full coverage of the car, because I'm a manufacturer and I have to stand for the product liability. I don't know if any of you understand anything about that, but I guess you don't or nobody does, because you're not an engineer, you don't make anything, so you don't know what's product liability. But product liability is a very important item when you own something and when you manufacture something. The second item I have here is that I would like to make a presentation and I will ask one of the city councils to sponsor, because I would like to make a presentation on fossil material. I have patented a nuclear plane for the propulsion of the bullet train there that we will need power to generate the train. And you have to take this and consider that way in advance, not when the train is on the track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Next speaker is Perry Keenan.
Perry Keenan from your sometimes a little bit imprecunious neighbor, Belmont. I'm sorry, council members. Just here as I'm going to observe how you perform your meetings and learn a little bit more about how councils function. And, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciated your comments about your reactions to what is said at the public, in the public forum. It's a little bit more elaborate than we have across the border. So, well done, San Carlos. You've got a great, vibrant city. You're maybe a little bit smarter than us. You let us have engine number 14, which, well done, which we're in the process of getting rid of. But keep up the good work and congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Next speaker is Laura Fanucci.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and members of the council and city staff. My name is Laura Fanucci from Hip Housing, and I have with me my friend tonight, Ava. She's in fourth grade here in San Carlos, and I'm here tonight to present you our 2015 Hip Housing Calendar. I think it's the best calendar yet. And this is the 14th year that we've had our calendar contest, where we ask students kindergarten through fifth grade to draw a picture of their home and write a statement about what their home means to them. We selected the school district of San Carlos this year, and Ava is our winner from San Carlos. And she's here tonight to read her quote and to show you her beautiful picture, which is in the month of June. She's an amazing artist.
Wow.
In the five minutes that she's been here, she just drew this amazing picture on this envelope that her mother just gave her. Absolutely darling. So Ava, would you like to read your quote?
My home means family, friends, and a safe place. It means I can sleep in my own comfortable bed and eat good, healthy dinners.
That's great. So we hope that you'll enjoy these calendars throughout the year. They help explain to the community about our affordable housing programs, our home-sharing program, self-sufficiency program for families with childrens, and also the properties that we own and manage, especially here in San Carlos. And we can't do that good work without your support, so we thank you very much and we wish you a very happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Ava. Ava, I'm sorry. Hip Housing is near and dear to my heart. I was on their board for nine years. Next speaker is Karen Wright.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and hello, council. The group I represent tonight, the Concerned Dog Owners of San Carlos, needs your help. About two weeks ago, the Parks and Recreation Director announced the cancellation of the Off Leash Park Program for dog owners. The program's been in place for more than three years and allows us to gather at limited areas of a few parks during select hours on certain days. I would estimate that more than 100 residents take advantage of this program on a near-daily basis. During those three years, there have been no serious problems. The playtime has not damaged the lawns. At Burton Park, the dog area was in excellent condition until about the second weekend of the soccer season. The poop problem, which existed long before there was an Off Leash Program, was declared to be better than ever due to the diligence of the park users, especially when we're gathered together at one time. Allowing residents to enjoy the parks when the fields are not otherwise in use has built a stronger community of friends and neighbors, all at no cost and no liability to the city. We come tonight to express, I'm representing a large group of dog owners here, and we come tonight to express our frustration with the manner in which the program was canceled, without any warning and without any opportunity to discuss or correct perceived problems. We're surprised and a bit angry that the city made no effort to work with the dog owners before pulling the plug. Concerned dog owners want me to assure you that we are ready, willing, and able to work with city officials to preserve this program in a successful fashion. In meetings we held just this past week, we've discussed practical solutions to some of Ms. Boland's concerns, but we weren't ever given the chance to share them, let alone implement them. That's why we need your help to open up communications. Ms. Boland suggested that as a substitute, the city would look for an alternative location for a dog park, but the dog owners of San Carlos have been taken down this road before and all to no avail. Countless hours of research and meetings and even formal presentations have been made to city officials in past years, and even if a magic answer falls from the sky tomorrow, it's going to take longer than two months or six months to have a park available for use. For those of us too old to play team sports, or whose kids are now grown, or whose only kids are their canine companions, the Off Leash Program is the only opportunity we have to use our beautifully maintained parks that as taxpayers, we help support. Sharing the park is about more than dog exercise. It's about building community. And isn't that what San Carlos is all about? So on behalf of the dog owners, I ask your help to direct your staff to bring this topic up and renew it again next in February. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Next speaker is Patty Marsters. Thank you, Patty.
Can you hear me? I'm close enough and everything?
There you go.
Okay. I'm from 990 Cherry. I have two minutes, so thank you for hearing the G E S C concerns about parking and earmarking funds for residential permit parking program as a condition of approval for the legacy buildings. In the meantime, the city has reduced available parking on the east side while proposing to increase development. So I have petitions from three blocks south of Holly Street, whose residents are ready to work with city staff to make the program a reality. We are asking for you to implement a permit parking program within the next 90 days, limiting parking without a permit to two hours between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and giving each household two permits with the option of applying for more. A majority of residents agreed to this with the understanding that their questions and concerns would be addressed in the process. Some concerns that came up already. All but one house was contacted on the 1,000 block of McHugh. They all signed, some were renters, many went to include Saturdays. Will nannies and babysitters get permits? Where will the signs be located? When is the cutoff time for the two-hour parking? Will permits be needed to park here at night after 7:00 p.m.? And what about overnight parkers? Residents on the 900 block of Cherry ask, what about guest deliveries, contractors who will be there more than two hours? Could temporary permits tied to existing permits be available online? Is there a way to forgive residents' tickets? The goal is to protect them, not hurt them or their families. Will there be a patrol or on-call enforcement? The two-hour limit on industrial doesn't seem to be enforced. What is the fine for a ticket compared to the Caltrain parking fee? Where will the signs go? There's no strip on the sidewalks of Cherry or Montgomery. We don't want signs in front of the walkway to someone's door, next to car doors, or on the sidewalk at all. Maybe in the gutter at property lines. Will we need extra lighting for signs? A couple of residents want limit to the number of parking permits given out, and all of them want reassurance there will be no charge to the residents. So I have the three, I have petitions from three streets and my copy of my notes, the concerns that came up. Who do I give them to?
Give them to Crystal. All right. Thank you, Patty. Yes?
Do we have, I'm trying to remember, don't we have a report that's supposed to be coming back from staff sometime in the not-too-distant future on the permit parking program? If not, I personally wouldn't mind getting one. Looks like staff is engaged in conversation on this very subject.
Sorry, Jeff, we had a question.
We don't, we don't have any immediate plans to bring the item to council, but the council earlier tonight met Elaine Costello, our new special projects director, who's going to be working with us for the next year. And this is one of the top three projects that we've put on her plate. So we're going to be getting out into the neighborhood and beginning the process of meeting with the residents to craft the program that works best for them as well as our enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't mind either, I don't know if anybody else is interested in getting the report, I mean, just getting an update from staff about what the timeline is of their, their plan for rolling this out.
Anybody else think it'd be a good idea?
I think that we should, I know it's in, I'm sure it's in the top three of Ms. Costello's new, new job description, but I would put it maybe in the top one. We've, I don't see the rocket science to this one, but maybe I'm missing it. So I think sooner would be better, I agree with Mr. Olbert, that I think it'd be great if we could get it going along even before some of the construction and some of the other things that are going to be happening down there. I know we have the East Side Connect, it's hopefully going to be finishing up in the next month or two or three or something like that.
Better than that.
Great. And then I would, I would recommend that we sort of fast-track that.
Add it to our future agenda.
So that'll be coming up?
We'll schedule an update for you in January sometime.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next speaker is Rita Fusaro. Thank you.
The council. I'm here to just speak a little bit to the Holly Street ordinance that went into effect on June 23rd. At that meeting, it was brought up that there might be consideration for removing the big trucks and buses that were circulating down Holly, maybe an option to route them on another street. I know both Jay Walters and Matt, I believe it was Matt Grocott here, thought that that might be something that was feasible and realistic to look into. And I just wanted to say that I was hoping that that was still alive, because since the ordinance, there's just been a significant increase in noise on the street and, and also a significant increase in dust and dirt around. I notice I'm washing my car every week, which is, so anyways, I just was hoping that maybe we can consider keeping that action alive and maybe think about rerouting those big rigs down another street.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next is Warren Lieberman.
Honorable counsel, I'm also somewhat unscripted tonight, but first of all, let's see, I would like to thank Mayor, Mayor Olbert for a wonderful year, and Mayor Collins and Vice Mayor Johnson, good luck with the coming year. I'm sure it's going to be an outstanding one. And to members of the council, all, we are delighted. As you know, I'm Warren Lieberman. I'm mayor of the city of Belmont for this past year. And as you noted, Mayor Collins, I'm here with two council members, Charles Stone and our vice mayor, David Bronstein. They have not given me official sanction for saying this, but I'm pretty sure that I do speak for all of us when I say that we were, you know, very touched by your kind comments, Mayor Collins, at the beginning of the meeting. You know, I served on the Belmont City Council that just finished my ninth year, and so I think I'm a little bit familiar with some of the unpleasantries that you alluded to between our cities. And I think it's fair to say that we have turned the corner and we are a very different council now. We've been, you know, it's been a privilege for me to serve with the council members that I'm serving with certainly this past year in Belmont. That said, I really just want to wish you all best of luck this year. We look very forward to working with you and having very productive meetings. Thank you very much and good luck.
And our last speaker, as far as I know, is Ben Fuller.
I've gotten to see three of you guys be mayor now, and you've all done a great job, and I'm looking forward now to seeing Ron, and then soon we'll see Cameron. So all five of you really appreciate what you guys do. I'm the president of Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association in 2008, and first of all, it's really exciting to see the guys from Belmont here. I just want to say that it's, to have some sort of collaboration with Belmont is necessary. It's really valuable. We in Greater East San Carlos have kind of been sort of the main game in town. I won't say only, I'll say the main game in town in terms of new development. And one of the things that's happened is a lot of the traffic is going up Holly Street and other places. And if Belmont and San Carlos work better together, maybe there's some way, I don't know how, that you guys can figure out some of these traffic issues. So thanks a lot for coming. Talking is always the first step, and we really appreciate you guys coming out. Another thing I want to mention is the school. So we've got incredible news, a big news announcement, newsflash, that there could be a high school in Greater East San Carlos. I want to second our former mayor Olbert's suggestion now on, maybe that's not the best location. It's right in the middle of, right now, if you want to go, I mean, Mayor Collins made a really interesting comment to me the other day. I was saying, yeah, it takes like five changes of the light to go south on, to go north on Old County Road across Holly. And he goes, yeah, and they haven't even done any projects yet. So just wait until some projects come in. I mean, this is, you know, there's a lot of traffic there. So I know that the school has a lot of jurisdiction. You guys don't have total control of this kind of stuff. I understand that, and you want to work with these guys. Maybe there is another solution, and we could possibly kill two birds with one stone if we clean up some of Greater East San Carlos and sort of, why don't we pass beyond our legacy of being the number one polluters in this area and try to clean up some of this stuff? So, and one last thing, I want to second the notion of a, moving the heavy trucks off Holly. I thought that was a great idea. And congratulations, Ron. It'll be fun working with you for the next year.
Thank you, Ben. All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. Oh. Oh. Come on up.
Why don't you go ahead and come on up?
Come on up. Maybe I missed you. Somehow it didn't make it.
Hi, my name is Diane Montgomery, 16-year resident of San Carlos. Thank you for allowing me to speak now. I did turn in my written request earlier and then I-
I do have it, sorry.
You do have it. I just wondered if maybe there was only one person per topic at this time. Okay.
You're fine.
Well, I am another participant in the Off Leash Program at Burton and other parts in San Carlos, and we have really enjoyed the benefits of that program for the last three years. And I got to say, most of us were pretty surprised that the program was just terminated. And as a group, we don't feel that we were allowed enough advance notice or enough communication, that enough of us even knew a meeting was happening, that we could participate. So I appreciate your time tonight to hear us. And that's basically what we're asking. The program was terminated due to what is called an excessive number of complaints, and they go back the entire three years that we have been there. We have tried to resolve some of these problems, but had we had a meeting prior to just the last week or, or two, maybe we could have, could have come up with the solutions that we have been discussing amongst ourselves for the last week or so. Since we found out, many of us just threw the headline in the newspaper. Everybody's going, say what? You know, we're in the doghouse. And we have worked to resolve problems in this program in the past. I think we have done pretty well in resolving them. We know there are people that break the rules, and we who have been trying to get a program going for the eight, nine years. I was originally in the, in a group called the Responsible Dog Owners of San Carlos eight years ago, and we spent months canvassing the city for acceptable sites, and we measured and took pictures, and then they just tabled it and tell, not ready for this now. Now, three years ago, we reinstituted the effort and we were granted the privilege of a six-month program, a pilot program. That was in January 2012. In August of 2012, Doug Long, the former Parks and Rec Director, deemed that the program was working well. In fact, the park had never been as clean as when the Off Leash Program started, congratulated us and said, it's a program. So I think many of us are not aware- So I think many of us are not aware of all the complaints that have been coming in and be allowed to address them. We think we can solve those problems. The people who break the rules, I don't know what to tell you. People come in from outside the area. We monitor best we can. We pick up everybody's poop if it's left there. We tell people on weekends, you're not supposed to be out there. And some of those people that break the rules, break rules in all over the areas of their lives. They probably run red lights and cheat on tests, who knows? But I just want to tell you my side of the story. I think the human element in this program is not recognized. I think that this program has benefited so many people. And I have this sad story. I, you know, boo hoo. I'm a senior, I'm not married, I have no children or grandchildren, and I have a medical condition that requires a certain amount of walking and exercise, which I think is boring. And friends of mine had dogs. And I thought, there's my solution. So I got a dog. My life changed. For the first time in 16 years in this city, I felt a part of this community. I made friends. I went outside the city for socialization prior to that. In these last three years, I've met these wonderful people. We share a common interest. We are a viable community within a community. And we just want to be heard and say, can't we just solve the problems and work on it? And be granted an extension?
Diane, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm still getting used to this whole timer thing. And I've kind of gone way over here. So if you could wrap it up.
And I do want to thank Mr. Malpe. I sent a rather lengthy email to him last week describing the benefits that this program brings to the city and this particular group of people. He has offered us the opportunity to speak with him. And we plan to get in touch with you and set up a meeting and hoping we can change your mind so that we can extend the program or at least have a hearing on it instead of just saying, it's done. So I thank you for your time. Sorry, I'm talkative.
Thank you. Matt, you, before our next speaker comes up, we have one more speaker. But Matt, you wanted to make a comment?
I think we're permitted to do this as council members. Can we just ask to have this item agendized if there's another council member that would like to support that?
Anybody else?
Through the chair, I think the program of talking to Mr. Malpe and Ms. Boland should be the precursor to the agenda item.
Which is that?
They're going to speak with Mr. Malpe and Ms. Boland.
Sure, that's fine.
And I think that's the precursor before we even agendize it. So that's my opinion.
All right. Okay. One more speaker, and I apologize. It looks like, is it Praja? Priya?
Two-minute timer. Congratulations. I'm a new Holly resident. I'm going to echo what Ben and Rita spoke before. I am on Holly. I've sent these suggestions to a lot of you in different ways. I'm just going to say them all out irrespective of the fact there's a lawsuit going on. The city still can show good faith and do good things. Between the time I bought the place and moved here, the road that was two lanes has become four lanes. To come during the day, I park my car in 7-Eleven and I walk. Nobody should ever have to do that. A city resident should never have to do that. To get to your home, you park somewhere else and you walk. And that is somehow acceptable. I've given several suggestions. One of them is doing a roundabout at the intersection of Industrial and Holly, which will regulate traffic, make people take different routes. There are two, you know, the two streets you can consider, which can be sort of, you know, one-way traffic in the opposite direction. So if you made Holly two lanes one direction, make Branston Road or Taylor in the opposite direction. And consider cutting holes in the berm. I'm glad that Belmont folks are here today. Maybe the two cities can merge, do something that's more, you know, insight with all the residents, right? I mean, you're just adding on projects and projects there without any consideration to people living there. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right, now I think we might move on. The next item is approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff or public request a specific item to be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we separately handle item 8D.
All right. Does that require a second?
No.
All right. All right, so 8E, so I would-
No, no, 8D isn't dog.
I'm sorry.
8D isn't dog.
8D, I apologize. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve consent calendar items A, B, C, and E.
Second.
All right. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right, so 8D, we will address after the, I guess-
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Unless you want to deal with it now.
I would just ask maybe perhaps, if it's not, maybe we could deal with it now.
I would be happy to deal with it now. It's mayor's prerogative.
Yeah, it's their prerogative, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we?
I actually would be happy to move the item. The only reason I asked to have it pulled out is because I wanted to make the comment that I want to thank Betsy Schneider again for all the great work she's been doing representing our community on the mosquito abatement district. She led the charge in uncovering some fairly serious problems there and participated in working through to a solution. So I enthusiastically support reappointing her. I just wanted to make, be able to make that comment.
All right.
I'll make a second to his motion.
Yes, that was a motion too, by the way.
Okay. I guess we need another vote?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right, moving on to public hearing. This is a public hearing on the 2015 solid waste rates pursuant to Proposition 218 in consideration of a resolution approving 2015 residential and commercial solid waste rates. Mr. Walter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. I'll be presenting the item tonight. I just wanted to let you know that in the audience, in case you have questions, we have staff from Rethink Waste, Kevin McCarthy and Marshall Moran. And we also have staff from Ecology. I believe Mario Puccinelli and Gino Gasparini and Tamra Del Benny are here as well. So just in case, we've got a good variety of staff that maybe will answer more detailed questions that I may have the answers for. So here we are tonight, the public hearing for solid waste rates. And I will- I apologize. So tonight's action, the council needs to hold a public hearing for the 2015 solid waste rates. That's per Proposition 218 requirements. And as part of that hearing, the public, the residents in San Carlos, had the opportunity to submit protests if they believed that the rate increase was excessive or should not be approved. So in San Carlos, with over 11,000 parcels, 5,500 would be needed for a majority protest. And as of tonight, and I can check with the clerk, but as of 5:00 tonight, we had eight protests that were submitted before the meeting. And those were, I believe, provided to council as well. So very small number. And also tonight, we need the council to adopt a resolution approving the 2015 rates, which we have included a program for a low-income discount for some of our folks in the community that are struggling to make ends meet. So a little bit on the solid waste process. The South Bay Side Waste Management Area, the Rethink Waste, as we call it, has a solid waste collection contractor, Recology, and an agency, South Bay Recycling, that takes care of disposal and recycling of all that's collected. They submit rate applications to the SBWA Board in the summer. Those are then reviewed by agency staff as well as SBWA staff. And they're brought back to that, the authorities board at their September 25th meeting for approval. And that includes the total contractor's compensation for 2015, both for Recology and South Bay Recycling, and other pass-through costs that are disposal and franchise fees for the city of San Carlos and other cities as well. The council reviewed the proposed 2015 rates at their October 13th meeting and authorized us to go ahead and send out the notice for the Prop 218 hearing. And all the other agencies within the agency area are in the process of setting their annual rates. So for 2015, the revenue requirement for San Carlos is 7.886 million. That is the contractor's compensation and our agency fees. However, the estimated collection revenue at the rates set in 2014 is more than that, at 8,94,000. And that results in an estimated, all but small, 207,000 surplus for 2015. So that's the good news. And again, just a little bit more detail on that. But the base revenue that would be collected at the current rates set in 2014 would be more than enough to pay for the services that are needed in 2015. So in the 2015 rates, we propose no rate increase in any category, residential or commercial. We also have taken council's direction. We've undertaken a further study of the overall rate structure, that is both commercial and residential. And we'll be coming back to the council in the spring of 2015 to report on that. We're studying such things as the costs for commercial services to be provided compared to the rates, as well as coming up with a plan for what we call cart rate alignment with the cost of providing services for the residential carts versus the rates that are currently being charged. The, with the proposed rate increase, excuse me, with no general rate increases this year, we felt like we had an opportunity to go ahead and make a further reduction on our two large cart sizes in the residential category. And that would serve to reduce the estimated surplus down by about $100,000. We would still be in the black for 2015 based on the rates that we have proposed. And then we would be looking at setting up a plan for cart cost alignment by the end of the Recology contract in 2020. So again, just looking at what we propose in the residential cart category tonight, the 64-gallon and 96-gallon carts would be decreased by the amounts shown, $5 and $15. Unscheduled services are part of the, what San Carlos residents can subscribe to for special services such as backyard collection, transporting carts over certain distances or overage events. And these unscheduled services are paid directly by the folks in San Carlos who want that service. So the rates for 2015 are going to go up by 1.47%, but that's based on a predetermined index in the franchise agreement. So that's not a general rate increase, but only for those customers who have subscribed to those services. We've put together a proposal for a low-rate, a low-income rate program that's based on the PG&E care program. And that has, by household income levels, those who qualify are able to take advantage of slightly discounted rates for energy. And in ours, we'll allow the opportunity to get some rate flexibility for some folks that can qualify for the program. But this requires a rate subsidy. And what we've proposed for the council is that that subsidy be provided by the general fund. It's a small amount. However, it cannot be provided by other garbage customers in the city. We assumed a 10% discount to the cart rate for all residential cart sizes. And our assumption was based on the fact that there are 1,400 care-qualified residents in San Carlos. Currently, 640 are enrolled in that program. And according to PG&E, 320 of those are single-family residents that have garbage service. So at this point, we're recommending that just under 13,000 be subsidized to fund this program for 2015. And what we'll do is, if council approves, we'll go forward with it. And then we will have the, put out the word and look for folks to participate and enroll, and then come back with the actual number when we know what that number is. But this is what we assume to be the highest number that we would get in the program. Something might be frozen up. I apologize.
Modern technology.
Hey, one back. Two, nope, nope, on the wrong way. Yes. First one of staff recommendations. Thanks, it's just two more to go. It's like a shakedown cruise, you know? You just leave it there, Crystal, that'd be fine. So the recommendations for the council tonight, after you conduct your public hearing, where you will be hearing from any residents that wish to address the council on this issue, we'd recommend that you make no rate changes for the following solid waste categories: the residential customers with 20 and 32-gallon carts and commercial customers. We'd also recommend that you would approve a reduction in the two largest residential carts, 64-gallon decrease, 64-gallon cart to decrease by $5 per month, the 96-gallon cart to decrease by $15 per month. That you would approve an increase for the cost of all unscheduled services in the amount of 1.47%. And that you would direct staff to implement a low-income program for residential garbage rates in 2015 and approve up to $13,000 from the general fund as a source of the subsidy. And then that would be questions from the council at this time.
All right. Questions from the deus, for Mr. Walter?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
All right, I didn't see the request to speak. Did you want to make a comment first?
No, it was a question.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever you-
All right, we'll start down with Matt.
So just real quick, the numbers that you're estimating on those who might sign up for the low income, that's based on, your start number there was those who are eligible for the PG&E discount?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jay, thank you for the presentation. I just want to make sure I understand that the way the staff recommendation is working as far as the low-income program is concerned is we are essentially approving certain parameters for the program, and then the cost ends up being whatever it is. In other words, it's a 10% discount, but if the estimate of the number of people who are going to enroll is higher or lower, the actual hit to the general fund will be different. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, okay. And the worst case is, is higher than the 12, 4, 7, 7, right? Because you assume that not everybody would participate.
That's right. That's right. Worst case would be, obviously, if all 1,400 happen to have a garbage account and would qualify for that.
And that would be roughly how much? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
All right. Cameron?
Thanks, Jay, for the presentation. So, I have a sort of a similar question. So, 320 folks seems like a small number of folks to be helping. I'm guessing that part of the reason for this is that a lot of the low-income residents are apartment dwellers, and so they don't have a garbage account?
That's correct.
Is there any creative solutions that we have? Or how do we think about, you know, apartment buildings where a lot of the, you know, residents would probably qualify for this program, but, you know, it's, it's hard to probably construct a program where the cost savings would be passed on to them? Have you guys given any thought to that?
We thought through that, and largely the difficulty comes from the fact that typically the multifamily unit complexes, the garbage bill is paid by property manager or owner or something like that, and that that's not individually sent down to the, to the resident to get their own garbage service. So, we felt like there would be a difficulty in trying to provide a subsidy, which would just be a payment to residents, when we don't know that that would be based on that garbage account and specifically related to that program. So, we felt like we'd start off kind of the conservative way to have it be that for those who could prove they had garbage service in their name and were qualified under the program, we could start it that way.
Okay. I mean, I think it would be interesting, and I understand that, and I understand the complexities, but I think it'd be interesting to talk to some building owners, particularly those who have, who are getting low-income subsidies essentially, and see if there's something that could potentially be worked out. Because it seems like for a city of 30,000 residents to be helping 320 people seems like a small drop in the bucket.
I would agree, but I think it gives us a good start to the program. So, we'd be happy to continue to do outreach on this and see if there's some other ways that we'd be able to include some more folks.
Okay. How does somebody go about enrolling?
We would, we have worked with PG&E to identify those folks in the program. So, we have now to sit down with our, our friends at Recology to try to figure out how we would set it up for the actual enrollment and the criteria. So, if council approves, then we'll set out with them in January and try to figure it out.
But so, do you presume it's an outreach to those individuals rather than having them, requiring them to kind of figure it out and find out?
It would be, it would definitely be an outreach to those individuals.
Okay. And then, shifting topic slightly, I asked this question previously, and I don't have a lot of history with garbage rates, so thanks for your indulgence. But can you, can you talk a little bit about the philosophy behind this cart cost rate alignment? And why do we necessarily believe that we should absolutely tie the rate to the, sort of, the variable cost of the size of a cart?
Well, at least, at least in part, it has to do with equity under Proposition 218. And I won't go into that, because I think our city attorney probably is more versed in that than myself. But what we look at is, in terms of the revenues, the rates that are paid by the various account holders, we want to make sure that they, that they believe when they, at the end of the day, they look and understand that the cost of the service they're getting is proportionate to the rate that they're paying. And I think what's happened over the last five, six years, maybe a little longer than that, has been a very big emphasis on recycling. And so, as the emphasis has been made to move customers from large garbage carts to larger recycling carts and smaller garbage carts, the, there's been somewhat of an incentive to get them to do that. But what we don't want to do is, we don't want to end up having the one group of the ratepayers subsidizing the costs of a different group of ratepayers. So, we feel like that the, the recycling behavior is very well ingrained now. We're moving towards the diversion targets that we need to meet, and it's time to start thinking about, as we get closer to the end of the contract with Recology, the need to have the rates reflect what it is that the, the service that's being provided actually costs.
Okay. And, and so, the rates here are for compost, recycling, and trash collectively? Or are they individual cart rate?
These individual cart rates are what the residents pay, but it also includes that compost cart and the recycling cart that goes along with it. That's their monthly rate.
All right. But the, the volume is tied to the garbage, the size of the garbage cart?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. There are those who have made the argument, this will be my last question, that decreasing the price of a large garbage cart creates the incentive to potentially, I guess, produce more garbage, and that therefore it's, you know, it's bad for our diversion targets overall. What would you say to that?
Well, I'm not sure I understand your question.
I mean, the, the argument is, is that...
Jay?
Okay.
I understand your question, Vice Mayor. And so, that's certainly a good point, and a point that we're sensitive to, but one that we're trying to balance here. And so, what's happened is, the original cart rates were set up years ago based on can size, and there was a difference associated with each can size relative to encouraging people to recycle more, so the larger can sizes cost a little more. But after, you know, a decade, 15 years of incremental percentage increases across the board to all the garbage rates as the services changed and the costs went up, you saw that disparity grow larger and larger and larger, to the point where we felt it's an actual liability where we've created too much of an incentive. And, you know, while we certainly understand how people, you know, people who want to be green and are making that effort, we certainly thank them, encourage them for that, but we do have an obligation to not overcharge people at the same time. So, it can't be purely a social engineering function, the rates.
That, that makes perfect sense. I appreciate the explanation. But, but we are still striving to go to total cost alignment. Is that the case? By 2020?
We're gonna, we're gonna come up with a strategy for council so that we achieve that by 2020.
Okay. All right. Well said. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I just had one question. You know, I was looking at all these letters and thinking, why are people protesting rates? They're not going up. And then I looked at the 218 notice, and it says, notice of intent to increase solid waste rates. And if you get to the end of the second paragraph, it says, the city council will not increase the rates as a matter of law. Are we sort of constrained by certain legal guidelines? Do we have to, do we have to have that title in it every year? Maybe, I guess, Greg, you're gonna answer this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the issue is a technical one. Because we actually are increasing the unscheduled rates, we had to entitle the notice, a notice of increase, even though the vast majority of residents will not see an increase and some will receive a decrease. So, another way of saying it is, if that 1.47% increase was not proposed, we wouldn't even have to go through a 218 process. It would be the same rates or lower than what the council had previously noticed.
All right. Well, that makes sense. All right. All right. No more questions from, I do see one more. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just wanted to ask, or make a couple of points, actually. When staff is doing this total cost realignment study, personally, I don't necessarily have a problem if we don't ever get to total cost realignment. I think, echoing terminology Mr. Malpe used, I think the social engineering aspect of this, there may very well have a role to play here. I don't think it has to be strictly speaking dollar for dollar. The other thing that I would love to see in, in whatever review staff does, is, we've always had a blind spot here of the assumption that just because somebody is using a bigger garbage cart, that they are doing a worse job of recycling, of diversion. There's an implicit argument when people make the argument of, well, we should charge people who use bigger carts more. But in reality, I think to assess that accurately, you really have to look at, like, family size, how much sort of gross trash they're generating, and what proportion of it's being diverted and what portion's not. I wouldn't want to spend a lot of money trying to figure that out, but any insight we could get into that, I think would be really helpful in terms of planning how we might change our rate structures going forward, because that's really the issue. It's not really in absolute terms whether somebody's using a big cart or a small cart. It's, how much diversion are they doing?
Keeping the larger goal in mind, it sounds like.
Right.
Yes.
All right. I believe this is a public hearing, and I don't have any speaker cards, but does anybody wish to address the council? Oh.
Of the surplus, the approximately $200,000 surplus that has been generated from fee overages, what does the city do with that? Does it go to the general fund, or is it going to be used for ongoing garbage? If they could, if Jay could address that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, Sandy, just filling out a speaker card? That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yes, in response to the question, the, Crystal, if you wouldn't mind putting up the, that 200,000 slide that we showed, the, let's go into the, well, technical, technical problems. Let's go a little further back, past the, the last slide. Keep going. Keep going. Past the end question slide. Okay, that'll be fine. Okay, so, the surplus that's, that's listed there as 207,000. As, as we mentioned to council before, and, and I neglected that slide this time, but the actual rate reconciliation process is something that occurs over several years. So, this 2015 rate year is still dealing with the, the final reconciliation of 2012 and 2013. It is, we're in the middle of 2014, so we're not quite done with that one yet. So, we don't know exactly what the costs will finally be. And then we're projecting what we think 2015 will be. So, the surplus of $207,000, it's kind of a moving target. Each year, it's a little bit different. It could be more, it could be less, it could be a deficit. It depends on what happens during the course of the year. So, it's not a hard target that says you have $207,000 that you can do something else with. It all has to stay in the, the garbage, the solid waste rates. And so, as we go year to year, we would, we'll, we will have a fluctuation between surplus or deficit, depending upon the conditions that have happened over the course of that three-year window. It's kind of a complex accounting, but it is, it's not as simple as just saying that we have that much money that's available to us in any one given year.
Okay. Thank you. Rita, did you want to come up and make a comment?
I think this is an easy one. So, this unscheduled services, are those the services that you get to free a year to pick up household items? Are those what the unscheduled, I'm not sure what the unscheduled service is about that the 1.47 applies to?
Yeah, so, they're not the free services. The free services remain free. So, this would be like somebody who has, has paid for backyard pickup, those kinds of specialized services.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right. Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. So, moved? Do we need a roll call for that? Okay. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gohcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. We ready for...
I would, I would move to adopt Resolution 2014.
118.
Dash 118, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos approving 2015 residential and commercial solid waste rates.
A second.
All right. Motion and second. Any discussion? All right. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gohcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
In honor of my father, I believe, this meeting's adjourned.